Made for short poles in a coastal area or walkway area in that way. Whereas with the truck parking being as wide as it was, it's not reasonable to put poles in the middle of that long distance.
Okay.
In that way. And just to go back to that one fact too, all those lights on the building originally were six hundred watt, they're a hundred and eighty watt now.
So you've diminished the wattage on the lights on the building, probably had to add some?
You may have to add some, yes, yes. But that's the, that's the highest wattage on the whole site is a hundred and eighty. But just comparison, the amber, the highest one they make is only a hundred. So that's where we got it. And it just doesn't have the punch. Amber lighting, think of some yellow lights, parking lots you've been in from the older ones. My, my meter likes it, that likes it, but our eyes don't like it. You only see about seventy percent of light that puts out. So even though that's still at half, usable, it's below that. So from a safety standpoint, that was a major concern. They, the employees wouldn't have a half a candle, they'd have a point two or point three of usable lighting now.
Okay. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I had some other comments earlier, probably late in the two thousand and nineteen about some other safety ideas that the company could probably pursue. Some other comments on the lighting. And really, I hadn't gotten any responses on the lighting until Friday, and I didn't get the plan until this morning. So if we're responsible for reviewing the lighting, I'd like a chance to take a look at it, digest it, and know we're approving.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's my take.
Anyone else on the, on the FEIS? I know that our consultants had some comments. Andrew, was there anything outstanding that, that, that needed to be addressed?
We generated a memo today. We got down to, I think, some plan issues. The, our concerns with the FEIS were addressed. We were looking for some additional technical information. It's, it's all site plan related, Fred.
I know that there were some, some issues with timing. We want to talk about that a little bit as far as how much time the public's going to have and how much time we're going to have. Because the SEACER does require certain timeframes.
The, the SEACER regulations provide that if an FEIS is accepted, there is a ten-day period during which no involved agency or the lead agency can act to issue findings. We've, we've been asked by the board and we've consented to doubling that period and, and making it run from the time of filing so that there's not a single day that it's not available. The day it's filed will be the day it's up on the town website, and there'll be the full twenty days from that point.
Okay.
That's, that's what, you know, we agreed to.
Okay. And then, isn't there a period of time that we have to adopt the findings after the FEIS is deemed complete?
The regulations provide a thirty day, I believe a thirty day period for the adoption of findings. However, that can be extended upon mutual consent of the board and the applicant. Just for comparison, Sailfish took a hundred and seventeen days from the filing of their FEIS to the time a findings date was adopted. I'm not suggesting this should take a hundred and seventeen days, but thirty days is just out of the question. I think Mr. Walensky would agree with me on that one. So...
First things first.
First things first. And let, let me back up. The twenty day period now up from ten is public and agency consideration. Doesn't even use the word comment. We interpret that to mean all letters will be accepted and read and received within that period. But it's kind of an odd terminology. Public and agency consideration period. Doesn't even say public comment. The purpose of it under the statute, as I recall, is, is they used to refer to it as a forced cooling off period. A time that, that is, that has to be set aside to deliberate further on, you know, in, in reaching a findings decision. So, but that's, but, but you're right. You know, it's often a period of time where comments fly in anyway, so. The board's under no obligation to respond to them, but they do fly in. And it's suggested that if and when you adopt this, deem it ready to file, that the notice indicate this twenty day period, not so much for the public, they're here tonight and hear it, but the other agencies. How are they going to know that they have a deadline? And, you know, we would like to hear from them, but you can't go out three, four months.
It has to be in the notice.
So I would think a one line addition to the draft notice of completion might be a good idea.
We have absolutely no issue with that.
And then, my last procedural comment is, Mr. Walensky mentioned it, if you act tonight, and I don't know if you will, but if you do, there's probably going to be a period of time to get it in final form. And he alluded to that. And these time periods would run from when it's filed because that's the first time the public can see it. And if you act tonight, I'm sure there's going to be subject to some tweaks. I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make before we're done. Not many, but they're kind of important. Until we get that back and see it's okay, that might take four or five days. So, if I may...
Yeah.
I did have a few substantive comments. This is based on a document I received on Thursday, and I think it's the last iteration. I think we'll be received tonight, it repeats or cleans up. But I don't think there's anything new in here since the twentieth of February.
Just the lighting plan and the lighting.
Okay. And I'll pass on lighting, it's nothing to worry about. Couple things, your new document does refer to the new Michaelo Junior memo of Feb. thirteenth on sewer. Mr. Walensky referred to that earlier this evening. I want to make sure that all other references come out. I didn't have a chance because the prior iterations had reserved capacity that was greater, thank you, that was greater than what the newest memo says. And I just want to make sure that there's nothing inconsistent in your document. And that January version had figures, I think thirty-seven, five, in a lot of different places. So I'd ask the applicant to make sure they all come out. What's new, and I think it needs clarification, it was page two dash seventy-six, now it's page two dash seventy-five, seemed to say that our own storm order expert, just like for Sailfish, paid for by the applicant but reports to the town, could only be on the site if more than five acres is disturbed. And I found that to be new and perhaps not acceptable. I think there may be some confusion between the applicant's storm order expert, who's got to be on the site pursuing, jump in here, Andrew, at any time, and our own person, who for the Sailfish approval is allowed on-site Atlanta, and if there's an emergency, doesn't even have to provide prior notice. This is all about making sure the storm order operates effectively, and if there's a problem that gets fixed immediately and not a week later. So, two dash seventy-five, formerly two dash seventy-six, I would ask that that five acre requirement, in other words, is written if it's, if three acres are being disturbed, then all people can't be on the site. I don't think that was the intention.
That was not our intention.
If you clarify that, that would be good. The MS four storm order agreement for Sailfish was a Cadillac document. We took our simple template, we really built on it, and folded in all these extra enhanced storm order measures and our own monitoring. I would ask that this document make a reference to the Sailfish MS four agreement as a model for Medline. Not asking to be wordsmith exactly, but we worked hard on that for Sailfish. I think it's a good document, and I see no reason to change it for Medline. So let me go on record as saying we did something similar for enhanced erosion control, and we're, we're okay with that as well. Make that reference. Speaking of the enhanced erosion control, I'd ask that they be bullet itemed right in the FEIS somewhere. I think right now there's a reference to them, and I think you may have to go to the SWIP and find it.
Site plan as well.
Site plan also.
Site plan, yeah.
You know, if we're going to have an FEIS that people will want to read, I'd like them to be able to see our enhanced measures that Jay Beaumont had a lot to do with for Sailfish, and I believe they're being carried over the Medline?
Yes.
Pretty much point for point?
Yes.
That's no problem.
And I think it would only take a page and a half to disball them, and then it can't be any confusion. And this is new, this is special for town like ours, but we're trying to go the extra yard on the storm order. So let's have everyone be able to easily find it. And my last comment has to do with ship out. And there's been stuff lately, we just got a letter February eighteenth from Mr. Parazzio, who indicated that two of the five sites are eligible for national and state registry. That was an interesting letter. We don't know where all of that's going to go, but page one dash forty-two, in my view, comes very close to having the board make a finding in the FEIS that the phase three data recovery will be acceptable mitigation. It may not exactly say that, but the inference is there, and I would suggest that be stricken. If the FEIS is not a place to make findings, that will come later. And I'd like to hear from Mr. Parazzio. I'd ask maybe Bobby to reach out to him directly, so we can just hear it exactly from the source. Because I was kind of taken aback by his letter. I mean, they found some stuff out there, and how that's to be mitigated is, is the question. With all that said, I think it's time to get this thing in the public's hands, and if you apply the act tonight, I'd ask that my comments be considered cleanup items to be addressed before the documents file.
Okay. Board, any discussion on the matter? Jay, Rose, John, Ryan?
I just feel that the, the lighting is so highly integrated into the FEIS, the fact that we just today received a letter saying that we've only gotten approval on the roadways or driveways, whatever we call them. And the board is responsible for looking at the lighting on the remainder of the site. I feel that we should take some time, look at it, know what we're looking at, and act on it at the next meeting.
Ryan, can I, can I ask a question? May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, the board is responsible for the entire lighting plan, not the consultant. Consultants make the recommendations, and I know he's made recommendations here. I don't know if you know the details about the back and forth that has been going on with that. We believe that we addressed your comments, or most of them, if not all of them, in the, in the FEIS. We keep being told that we haven't addressed the comments, but we're not told specifically exactly which ones haven't been addressed. My, my, my listening to all of this is that the, the real key in, in accepting the impact statement as complete is whether we've adequately, and you have adequately assessed the impacts. And we believe that the document, that the document that's there does that, and that it, and it, and that any remaining adjustments could be completed at site plan review where these kinds of things are often typically done. Because, you know, I've asked the question before, nobody's been able to tell me if the, if the present lighting plan, you know, that is, is there, assuming it's just like it is in its current state, what the, what the, what impact is there causing? What impact is being caused? We've been, we have been on this lighting kick for, you know, I don't know how many months now, and it just doesn't seem to be getting resolved. And it, and, you know, it, it, it needs to be resolved. So if you could tell us even tonight, why have Matt here, what the specific concerns you have, we can perhaps address them tonight and, and make you, you know, more comfortable with acceptance of the, an FEIS.
So I would agree that we have worked quite, quite hard on this. We've gone back all the way to November, and I've got probably over a hundred comments. Probably ninety-nine of those have been answered, so I do appreciate your team's hard work on that. But since November, I've had comments about the lighting, and I've been told it's being worked out with the consultants, and, you know, it will be responded to once the consultants have worked through this. So consultants worked through it on Saturday, from what I'm understanding. And today I get the lighting plan that I've been asking for since November, and I would just honestly like a chance to look at it and understand what's going on in the whole site. So there may be some questions, and Matt did answer some of those today. Again, we're going back and forth and looking at the cell phone on a plan that's thirty-six inches wide.
Well, I, I suggest that you two actually sit down together with a plan, and I think that would probably resolve it.
As far as building, driveways, drive aisles, parking, that's not going to change regardless of what we come up with as questions on the lighting. What would change is number of poles, performance of the lights. Correct, Matt? Ryan, do, do we agree that what, only thing that's going to change here is basically a lighting layout? You're not going to, we're not going to move the building or anything like that or change the grading because of the lighting?
I've never seen that done before because of lighting. That would be something up to them. We can control the lighting with the lights. The only difference between what Bill approved and what's in the rest of it is that color.
That amber.
Yeah, amber and twenty-seven.
I, I know.
And that's, that's the issue, the issue with it. So I just know what you, I just, I know you haven't had a chance, I guess, I guess. It's not like we're using a whole different fixture, a glare bomb, or, you know, any, anything in, in that regard. It's just that different color of light. You're not going to find amber lighting anywhere around here, and there's a reason for that in that regard. So, you know, it's kind of wrapped around in that way, because that's the only difference. The, the ratios, the averages, the uniformity is as good or better in the area with the twenty-seven hundred. And like, you wanted to see like on those grass areas and things like that, you'll see that paper down to zero, and it shows that, you know, nothing was placed with on, on property line or anything like that. It, it was just left off, because it said, those are set busy plans. We typically, when it's within the owner's property, from the pavement to the property line, they, they just don't have to show those statistical numbers. But it, as you'll see on there, they, they all paper down, it's, you know, clearly shows what those handles zero.
I think my guys are reminding me to mention that plan exceeds the town's zoning code standards, and that, that the plan that is the, for us, with the exception of the most recent, the most recent stuff done on the driveway has been around since January, so...
Could one of the cleanup items be that Ryan gets a chance to look at this before this gets filed?
Sure.
Absolutely. Does that make sense? It gives us the, the few days it would take for you to look at it as...
Well, I mean, Fred, I don't know when the next meeting is, but, I mean, we trust everything else. If we can take a look at this, I don't see why we couldn't act on the completeness at the next meeting, is it March ninth? I guess they said...
It's two weeks.
Absolutely. When I'm talking for the applicant.
Would you? Pardon me? What do you think? What do you want to do? You want to wait till the ninth? Well, it has to wait till the ninth? We don't have enough people.
Okay.
Okay? We'll have to wait till the ninth.
Is it, can I just understand that this is the last issue that we need to resolve? I don't want, you know, between...
We're talking about the FEIS completeness comment.
Yeah, FEIS completeness.
This is the last thing. Everything else you'll have to clean up, Rich's comments.
Yeah.
You'll have to clean those up. And, and Ryan has to have a chance to look this over. He may have some questions on it. Fair enough?
Yeah, I would agree that the storm order was resolved last week with the guys, so I appreciate that. And this is the last remaining item that I have on my list.
Any other board members have anything that we should pay attention to? Because I don't want to show up on March ninth and be stuck again.
I know that Rich, Rich's concerned about the view shed from eighty-four, and that's going to be part of the site plan, correct?
Yeah, what we did, what we did to address Rich's issue, we believe that our, our, our sightlines are correct and demonstrable, but Rich said, what if they're not? It's another idea to address the what-if scenario. And we're putting a note on the plan that there'll be no certificate of occupancy if there is any loading dock that is visible from eighty-four or from four sixteen.
Thank you.
Guys, is that, is that...
It, it's fine, and I appreciate it. I am not just imagining things. I looked at a series of maps.
No, we understand.
And driven in a number of times, and rolled over and looked at the situation, and...
We respect, we respect your, you know, your opinion on that. And, and, you know, we respect your opinion on that, and, and that, and we're, you know, fine with it. And we came up with something to address it, so.
I, I appreciate it. I just have to comment that from the beginning of the year, it's not substantial issues perhaps, but there's been a number of issues that have been moving targets, and perhaps the consultants have spoken to your team, or a few members of our board have spoken to your teams, but the rest of us all have to catch up to what's been going on and be able to agree that we're comfortable with the plan, and...
Okay.
So that's all I'm trying to do here.
Understood, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next this evening is National Builders LP, One One Page Trucking Corp., One Thirty-four Millie Town Road Warehouse. I'm very sure of it. National Builders representing the applicant, Charlie Bizzillo, how are you, Charlie?
I'm good, I'm good. Anyway, Charlie Bizzillo, outside counsel for National Builders. I'm here for the continuation of the public hearing. I would point out to the board, this actually is the fourth public session we've had on the project. Board may, you may not recall, back in October of years, right, two thousand and eighteen, we held a, what was called an informational public hearing. And we did send out notices about that to all of the properties within five hundred feet. So, you know, so that, that actually acted as sort of the initial public hearing. We opened up the hearing in January of this year, continued in at the last meeting, and we're here now, so this is almost, this is really the before session we're here for. Since the last meeting, I believe, you know, Dave Young and Jason have responded to, have been working with Mr. Featherstone and addressing his, you know, technical questions he has on the project. We also did receive a comment letter from Mr. Marshall on behalf of some of the residents on Conklin Lane. And I believe that, well, I do know that Mr. Young and Jason have responded to that, specifically the board has that in front of them. I'll just say in general, we can talk about the specifics, but in general, Mr. Marshall suggested a couple of things at the end of this letter about, namely about adding more landscaping around the detention ponds, which we actually already have on our project site. Came about as part of the, your landscaping consultant's suggestion also, so we have that there. There was suggestions about protocols. If we do have to do blasting on the site, we certainly don't have any objection about that, in order to, you know, document existing conditions on the houses that may or, you know, that could potentially be an impact. We don't believe they would be, but it actually is an emergency to document existing conditions. Similar to water, water conditions do, there was a suggestion in Mr. Marshall's letter that the residents on Conklin Lane get a water sample from their wells before we may start the project. Again, we have no problem with that. We would ask to be copied on that, obviously, so we can all understand what the baseline conditions are. But we do feel our stormwater system is designed properly, that we're not going to have any stormwater impacts or quality impacts on those homes on Conklin Lane. And that's pretty much where we're at at this point. We're, we're hopeful the board, based upon tonight, can hopefully close the hearing and move forward with the project. Again, first steps to get to the SEACER deck on the project is in the first order, and then certainly if there's any remaining technical issues about the site plan, we can, you know, go on and address those in subsequent meetings, so. Right, so more than...
Okay.
I meant to be sure that that's how it goes, so.
Dave, do you have any updates on the plan?
Just a couple things. I did hear from Anthony Trociano at the Orange County Department of Public Works, and he had been on unplanned leave for personal reasons. That's why he hasn't gotten back to us. He did say that he wanted to have a, an agreement in place for the maintenance of any of the stormwater facilities in the right of way, which, of course, is not a problem with us. The lighting and landscaping have both been submitted. Lighting was submitted to Bill on the eleventh, and the landscaping on the twelfth. As Charlie had said, we did respond to the Marshall letter that was received by the town, and we submitted that to you last Friday. There was one question in particular about the channel protection volume, and I've since that letter worked on some calculations to show that we indeed do need the channel protect volume, it was a concern. But that's something we'll have to address with the next letter on the project. And I believe that was about it. We did receive your notes on the blasting from the previous project, and I went through our blasting notes that were on sheet G O O two, I believe it is.
Yeah.
And I went through and added in the things that we didn't have there already, so...
Okay.
That will be, again, on our next version of the plans.
Okay. Thank you. I know that we do have, do you have a, a review we just received from Mr. Featherstone? We'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay? And maybe what I could do, just for the public, this is basically the blasting protocols, just to give you an idea of, of what will be required. Okay, I'll try to breathe. That any cuts and fills required on the site will be conducted in accordance with the Town and Army Local Zoning Law and any other applicable laws. That if it were determined that rock excavation or removal shall become necessary, the town plant, planning board... the town plant, planning board will be notified and appropriate protocols and notifications will be established and permits will be required. That standard New York State protocols for blasting rock will be followed. And that only licensed blasters will be employed and state and local protocols will be followed. Let's see. The impacts associated with the necessary blasting of bedrock will be mitigated by the implementation of controlled blasting techniques, including the use of appropriate delays, controlled loading to minimize the amounts of blasting agents and proper matting and stemming techniques. Blasting will be conducted in accordance with federal, state and local ordinances and will occur only as necessary and only during regular working hours on normal working days, not on weekends. Prior to any blasting, a request will be made to adjacent homeowners to conduct a thorough pre-blast survey to determine existing conditions. The blaster will be required to have insurance and be responsible to coordinate with adjacent homeowners on the pre-blast survey. A thorough pre-blasting survey, including evaluation of impacts to not only existing structures, but to any subsurface utilities, including water supply wells, will be implemented. And there's a list of seven things here. Notification of neighboring properties and town building department. Controlled access to the site. Sounding of audible alarms. Placement of seismic monitors to detect vibration in air blasts. Placement of muting and stemming. Placement of blasting mats. Meet all federal, state and local regulations. Monitoring of blast strength will be conducted during the blast and seismic recording devices will be monitored to ensure blasting regulations are met. Seismographs will be placed along property lines with neighboring properties to document strength and impact of blast and to ensure compliance with federal and state regulations. So it's not just like somebody's going to come in and start shooting things, you know? So there, there is quite a, quite a list of requirements to be considered if they have to blast. Just so everybody has that information. Okay, well, this is a continuation of a public hearing. So we'll open up the floor for comments. And so if anybody has a question or comment, please feel free and just note, give us your name for the record.
Blaine Petzel, Conklin Lane. Mr. Marshall received this response at eight thirty-three this morning.
Okay.
I got it at nine forty-eight or something like that. I worked before. And the meeting was at seven thirty. There has been no time to redo this. And I suggest that we table this till we can look at it.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? Any questions? Yes, Shereen?
Yeah, a really quick one, just mostly for an education. How are the wetlands going to be protected during this blasting and that we know they're not going to be affected? I know you're going to protect the neighbors, but out of curiosity, how do we protect those? And considering whether the altering of the vibration rate of the land, what, what goes on to protect them, just for knowledge?
Standard erosion and sedimentation control plan will be put into place before anything like that occurs.
Okay.
And I understand that the, I mean, we're talking about blasting, but it's only if it's necessary. The geotechnical report that was completed, which peppered this entire site with borings, the result was that most of the rock was ripable. And that's what they would anticipate for the earthwork that has to be done on this site.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you. Karen Zetton, Village of Montgomery. I just wanted to inquire on whether or not this is the revised site plan. So have you got any kind of noise or sound shielding on the east side of the site, the Maybrook side of the site, that could protect Maybrook from this additional truck impact?
That was part of one of Mr. Marshall's comments. And it follows through our comments also, so we'll...
That's still under, under development?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
I just, just, just real quick on that. Again, facing east side, there is a substantial wooded area that's already left in place as part of the site plan. In addition to that, we have added additional vegetation around the stormwater basin that faces that east, that eastern end. So we do believe that that will further mitigate the noise levels from what we were predicting in the study. And the, and the study that was done on it actually shows that we're not going to have an impact off-site on any, on any of the residential properties that are there. But that's without taking credit for any of the woods that are there. And then we've also added additional landscaping too, so. So in essence, the, the noise mitigation barrier, I don't know what all the barrier, but the noise mitigation area is there already on the site plan, so.
Mr. Bobbuck, could you bring up that plan and profile?
We have a landscaping letter from our consultant.
What's the date, Rich?
It's February seventh, twenty twenty.
Right, and that's been responded to.
Several, I mean, there's been additional plantings of evergreens.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
I, as a part of the lighting originally, we had put together a plan and profile to show the nearest residence, labeled existing residence up here. Over here. And then we show a, basically a baseline going right through over to the building through the closest light that is designed for the edge of the parking lot there. You can see that, you know, the line of sight has approximately four hundred and twenty feet of vegetation on our property as well as the adjoining property. The profile at the bottom shows the elevation of the, the home, the residence closest here. And then the line of sight going up to the, the light itself. And we didn't extend it beyond, but you can see the top of the building there also. We interspersed wooded areas, stayed, you know, forty to sixty-foot tall trees in there. We do admit that they are deciduous in nature. So they won't be like an evergreen buffer. But at the top of the detention pond, we did put a six-foot-high fence, as well as you see the Norway spruce, as well as white pines that are going to be planted along the top of the detention pond berm. And we, we show it at full height, of course. But we'll be planting those at six to eight feet. And white spruce in particular grow very fast. So they should be up to full height within five, six years.
Okay, where are those trees in relation to the pond? They are going to be...
The pond is shown on here. There's a dimension across here.
Right, I, that I get...
And right here's the edge of the berm.
On, on the actual...
Oh, I'm sorry. Up here. Well, that's a good question on that. They are right along here on the landscaping plan. Apparently the, the plan here didn't get changed, but the landscaping plan has changed and that's what was...
That's right, but what I have was after...
Sorry about that.
The plan, the most recent plan we have is prior to Aaron's comments being addressed.
Right.
Okay, so there's been added trees and, well, the fences are six-foot?
Right, six-foot fence along. And we, we have actually moved the fence to the top of the berm all the way along through there.
Okay.
So, and again, we'll, we'll provide slats in there if that's what the board would like to see.
Okay, and you have the row of evergreen trees, coniferous trees, between the fence and the, the existing wood line as it is today, right?
Between the fence and the pond. It's on the top of the berm.
Okay.
I want to, I just want to interject here. I got the letter. The letter that you're speaking about, I got it on Thursday. I spent my Saturday going over it. I generated a comment letter that went out on Monday today. One of the things in that letter, when I saw the, the plantings on the top of the berm, that's, that's what he means to show up there.
Right.
Trees are not to be planted on the top of a berm. Or the New York State Stormwater Design Manual, also from the Design Standards for Damp Safety. Trees have a habit of falling over and ripping up soil and then possibly causing a breach. If it happens when they're full, you could have a, a problem. So the, the trees should not be planted on the top of that berm on the far side. Perhaps they should be planted between the parking lot and the detention basin. They'd be closer to the source of the noise. And they wouldn't be a threat if there was a tree to go down or burrowing animals going into the roots. It's, it's in the stormwater manual. It's in my comments from today. Should be, that should be addressed.
Thank you, Andrew.
Fred?
Yes, Jay.
Rose and I spent a lot of time trampling the woods with Blaine the last couple of weeks. Thing that Larry made a, a point in his letter about the understory. It's easy to walk through that woods because there aren't many bushes and stuff. And I think that basically the, the noise will travel there. There's, you know, a good twenty more feet of, before you get to the leaf line in most cases. I'd prefer, and given Andy's comments, you mentioned the fence, a solid fence along the, along the parking lot edges, not only on the, which this, I'll call the south side, but also on the east side because that also faces Maybrook. Maybrook, just by its location, gets rammed by yellow freight. And the XO folks that have stored at this site plus Maybrook Materials go down, came into existence before we had noise regulations. They have, no matter what, noise regulations. So I'd like to not exacerbate that problem any and try to spend a relatively small amount of money for this whole size of this job, putting in a good fence to, to buffer the noise.
Jay, just if I could, Fred.
Yes.
Just so that the board, the board understands, the parking area up on the top, the pavement up on the top is, let's say, three fifty elevation. Top of the berms on the stormwater is three forty-two. There's a ten-foot difference dropping down to those stormwater ponds. Then there's another ten feet going down to the grade, which does undulate down there, but the pavement is way on high. Just so that the board understands where everything is situated. So that unfortunately, the noise is on high and then goes down towards the, the homes in general.
So any attenuation to that noise should be up high by the, by the source?
Best served on the edge of that pavement, edge of the curve, behind a guide rail with the solid fence that Jay's speaking about. Maybe supplemented with some landscaping.
Some evergreens, yeah.
Evergreens, yeah.
That make sense, Scott?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Floor's still open. Anybody from the audience? Yes, Don?
Even. So I missed the meeting. I was away, so maybe these things are answered. You know, I, I'm still thinking about that traffic out on Neely Town Road. And what's going to be done, just to remind us, board, that with this project, you also have added to that is bedline, do-it-best FedEx, that are all asking for improvements. Or bedline being a single project that's rather huge. So I guess what has been done in the thinking of traffic through there, I know that Ms. Pennings made comments on, on trucks being parked on Neely Town, creating quite a safety hazard up and down Neely Town. So which leads to me to ask, where is the county's involvement? Has the county gotten involved in this process? Are they going to have a cumulative traffic study with all these projects that's in and around the Neely Town area? What kind of communications have been made with county?
We actually have gotten a comment letter back from the county. And one of the issues that it asked us to do was to take a look at our traffic study we had done and to specifically add in the bedline, the potential bedline-generated traffic. We did that. That information's been submitted to the board. It did show that this project would still not have any impact on the service levels on, on Neely Town Road. And so, you know, so we had done a traffic study before that. The county came back. They are involved and looking at it because we have a, you know, a driveway cut onto the county road. And we've addressed their comments. And as far as we know, well, the data proves that, that we don't, we don't have, we don't have an impact on the service areas, on the service levels on, on Neely Town Road. Already the critical intersections around there.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me, let me, I got, I got to say something.
Break on this.
You know, Medline's saying they're going to have seven hundred trucks. This guy's coming up here and saying that's not going to have an impact. Yeah, yeah. On Neely Town Road.
Right.
All right, it's going to have an impact. So, you know, we've been going at this for a year and a half. And I think quite a bit of the residents here have made it very clear, we really don't dig the applicant's traffic studies. That's why we keep asking for the town to do it, for the county to do their own. Their traffic studies benefits them. For this gentleman to come up here and say that Medline's not going to have an effect, only Macklandy.
Richard, our, our last comment letter dated today includes traffic comments as well. How do traffic engineers look at them as well?
I've been commuting for the past year and two months. My name's Jeff Anzan. I said my name before, but it's the same as it was about an hour ago.
We have to have it, you know, for each tier.
Gotcha, okay. So I've been commuting from Montgomery to Brewster for the past year and two months doing a job up there, okay? I know what the traffic's like every day on Neely Town Road. It's a disaster now. Eighty-four is a disaster now. So now you're, all these people coming up here with these big projects. It's amazing how they say it doesn't impact anything. There's no impacts. This project doesn't impact that project. That project doesn't impact that project. These are massive projects happen or could happen in the village, around the village? In the town. And a blow to one another, you all just sit up here and it seems like you're allowing that to happen. Car dodge, like it's been paid for somehow. Secretly, a company comes in, they buy a piece of property without any permits. Who goes out with a house? Just buys a piece of property, says they want the house with no permit. They've known, get the permits first. They take their time and do things. This company comes in, buys a huge piece of property, and they ask for permission later, and you're not going to grant it. It's a joke.
Okay, board, any comments?
Can we just have Mr. Young explain where the blasting may occur? I think he said there's a couple isolated areas that may have harder bedrock or harder bedrock.
But we haven't determined exactly where that's going to be because it'll be a field condition if they get out there and it's not ripable in a particular location where there's deeper area of bedrock. And that's where that will have to be. And there isn't a specific location right now.
Do you know where the deepest cuts on the site might be? Is that something we could look at?
Well, you basically have two ridge lines that come through both of these locations. Okay, so there's going to be some cut to put this in, as well as this goes down and then comes back up again. Basically, it's like a W across the warehouse, so. This is going to be definitely a fill area. This is a little bit below grade over here. And then in the middle, there's a, I believe, a five or six-foot cut. I have to take a look at it to make sure. Then there's some cut over here for this side. That embankment has to be cut down over there. This is pretty much a balance of cut and fill down here, with it being filled along the edges, coming down toward the wetland area, being filled along this side, you know, again. And then these are basically almost right I created there, so.
It looks like the, the east side of it is what would require the most excavation as far as, because there's a, it looks like there's a pretty good knob there. The trail runs up on the one side of it and the other side.
There's a cut right down in the northeast corner there. That does come up fairly high in there.
Yeah, four sixty-six is about the high point on this. And your floor is four fifty-three? Is that correct, Dave?
Right.
Okay, so four fifty, four sixty, four sixty-six at the most, fifty-three, thirteen, fourteen and a half feet. They'd have to go down at the high point. So it's a pretty balanced site, cut and fill?
There's, there's a little more fill than there is cut.
Okay, okay. So it's just that, really that upper northeast, Ryan? So it's just that, really that upper northeast, Ryan, that up in there, that area is what's gonna need the most, would need the most cut. But it's also fairly steep too, right?
Well, relatively, yes.
Yeah, I mean, one for contours, I mean, you go fifty feet and you're down a grade up in that upper corner.
Right.
Okay.
So Fred, what was the notification limits for that blasting per call you read? Was it five hundred feet like the one just adjacent homes?
That's something we could, it would have to be, you know, we would have to maybe set that.
I mean, in this case, there's a very limited number of homes, I think, we could probably pick up all of them at the back end of that development, so.
Exactly. They may even want to build it up on the north side, right? The south, there's nothing, I don't think, is your plane, it's just that vacant. But when one thirty-four and the others are to a warehouse up there, they would probably want to know too.
Could we have Andrew take a look at that and kind of give us a recommendation?
Yeah.
Radius or?
I'll play it, see, yeah.
Just for your reference, this is a three-hundred-foot setback from the property line and that's what's required in your regs, of course, for, you know, truck parking within that three-hundred feet or worse. Beyond that even, probably almost four-hundred feet to the edge of the parking lot there. And that'll be the first area of significant cut.
Okay. So we'll come up with some parameters for that. Anyone else? Yes, Fred?
William Petzel.
Oh, hey, sorry.
The two ridges that are, there's exposed rocks on those bridges. Very close to them are retention ponds.
Yeah.
You're gonna be blasting where my drinking water comes from. You're gonna be fracturing rock where my drinking water comes from.
Okay.
And has anybody here ever seen a tree mature for five years? I'm a woodworker.
Yeah, no.
Jack and the Beanstalks didn't grow for five years.
I apologize, I didn't mean to fall.
Yeah, you got a lot of, for, I'm concerned. This report doesn't even look, sound like the last two months. This sounds like a whole different piece of property.
Okay, now I wanna continue to beat the dead horse with the traffic study. And there are numerous projects going on within the villages, also the town, but also the DOT. There are several projects that, for the Hudson Valley alone, are gonna impact over the next two to three years. The same time these warehouses are being pushed through to roll their trucks out, are gonna be impacting everything else. On top of that, Legoland, when the advocates on widening seventeen for Legoland and also the tourist traffic going up to Solomon County, if they have their way, there's no traffic whatsoever, it's all gonna be a standstill. It's gonna be a traffic jam from New York City to Albany. Anyone else we haven't heard from on this project? John, you had a question?
Yeah, John Brown, Town of Montgomery. We had a question last time on the wetland delineation of when that was done. And I think a number of people brought up comments that with all the development in the area, wetlands tend to enlarge over time. So there was a question, has this been redelineated currently that those wetland boundaries are active?
I believe, yes.
When?
Some of the last response letter, it was, I believe, um...
Two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen.
Yeah, two thousand and eighteen is two years ago. Wetlands change within a year with major developments.
D E C regulations, five?
Five years, yeah.
That's regulations, but the Board can ask for an update considering that there's been a tremendous amount of development because wetlands enlarge.
We updated the wetlands because they had enlarged slightly down on the southern edge of the property and that's why the delineation was done through D E C.
In two thousand and eighteen?
Yes.
But not since then. The Board can ask for an update and you should do that. The second point is, how much impervious surface is created with this development? How many acres?
I don't wanna miss both out here, I don't have a rate of my fingertips.
Yeah, probably in the twenty range? What's your say?
Probably fifteen to twenty, yeah.
So how much extra overall stormwater volume is going to be going off at the site?
It's in the...
No, if you have the rates, I'm asking volume. Because that volume will wind up in those wetlands and increase it. And you're right at the hundred-foot limit right now. Those wetlands are gonna grow. And have you done a calculation of how they will be expanded as a result of that increased volume? I mean, any of the P E's up here will tell you, wetlands are constricted outflow and saturated soils. You put more water into them, they grow. One of the biggest causes of wetlands growing is increased volume. And I think at least, considering how close you are to the hundred-foot limit, you ought to at least evaluate what that change will be because I predict that they're gonna grow significantly with all that extra stormwater volume running into them. That's my recommendation, thanks.
Okay, I know that we've got a comment letter to get to you that we have to analyze what we received recently. Entertain a motion and continue this hearing on the ninth.
Sheriff, if I could, if I could... Before you vote on the motion, we've had other public comments tonight. I think the issues are still the same as we've heard in the last three meetings before this. I'm not saying that these are not issues that need to be addressed and, you know, they are, they are issues that can be addressed, including mostly site plan issues. I would still think that it would be the Board's prerogative to close the public hearing so that we don't keep going over the same issues over and over again. And it would, it would be helpful for the Board to do that. And again, you know, particularly about the noise issue, there's room on the site to address the noise issues. Stormwater's been studied, site lighting's been analyzed. And again, these are issues that the public has brought up, but they're not new and they have to be addressed. So I do think it would be appropriate for the Board to close the public hearing.
Just to jump back to nine fifteen, we got all this stuff at the last minute.
I'm looking to reconvene on the ninth at seven. Do we have anything else on the night?
Yeah.
Seven forty on the ninth? Medline's not public, not a public hearing.
No, yeah, Medline, no.
Okay. Motion by Rose, second by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is a public's notification, we're gonna, we'll talk about this, hopefully we'll have some updates on the plan, seven forty on March ninth. Thank you. Next this evening, we have Brackett Twenty, warehouses, Brackett Road, Leonard's Drive. As you've mentioned, site plan and two block subdivision, this is a continuation of that public hearing.
Good evening, how are you? Good, how are you? John Aaron Berkman, Golden Island, attorney for the applicant, Jason. Here at your last meeting, there were some outstanding comments from your engineer. I believe we satisfied them. We're here for continuation of the public hearing. And I've been here for some time now, so we'd like to see if you can make some progress tonight and we chose a good direction. As for site plan changes, I'll let Dave give a summary.
Okay.
We, we had submitted back on the fourteenth to Andy. Basically, trying to address a time of concentration issue that he had raised in his latest red letter. At that time, we had talked on the phone and he had some additional comments about the other times of concentration that we took a look at. And this was last Friday is when it came awareness and we revised the model to see what the impacts were. And we were able to get to the point where the ten and a hundred-year storm were addressed. And then the town protection volume of the one-year storm was also sinumfined managed on those plans. I guess at this point, I'd like to sit down with you, Andy, and just walk through whatever's left. I mean, to me, there's a few comments in the last letter that we just, you know, it was like typo type of things and just making sure the setbacks were okay with the water well versus the septic, things like that. Those are, those are easy to address. It's just making sure that you're comfortable with the stormwater management plan that we presented to you. Likewise, that one, the biggest concern we had over the first time of concentration change was that we couldn't make the hundred-year storm work in the middle. But when we separated the discharges so that one distracted one to the D E C wetland and one went to the core wetlands, then the hundred-year storm worked. So I think at this point, if we could just sit down and get that work through, that would be easy enough to take care of any of the remaining engineering comments. And then landscaping was submitted on the twentieth of January. We haven't seen anything back on that yet.
Okay, I'll work on Karen. Fred, uh... Yes, Andrew?
Dave, I had no problem meeting, of course.
No.
The comment letter I gave to Dave is, it is technical stuff, but the comment letter I gave to Dave said, "Look at the entire site." "We sketched where we believed there was a change that needed to be made in the calculations." And we said, "Here's one example, look at the rest." So now we're still here because we didn't look at the rest before. I didn't pick... I think it could have been more expedited, is what I'm telling you. I said the first time, "Look at, look at everything," and, you know, the applicant looked at one. So that's why we're, we're still here.
Okay.
I don't think it's a, it's not a showstopper, it's something that needs to be corrected and done, that's it.
Okay. Is this a continuation of a public hearing? Entertained comments from the public, comments or questions? And please identify yourself for the record. Yes, Cherie?
Cherie Zohakis, resident. If you can view the site plan, I do not recall what the exact page was, but it delineates the property lines and it also delineates the sixty-foot setback requirement from the road. I ask that if you look at that, as I looked at the plans and measured it, I found that both parking lots ingress on that frontage requirement. The code states that there is to be nothing in that frontage requirement. Once the frontage requirement has been met, of, in this case, a minimum of sixty feet on Brackett Road, that, and then they can place a parking lot. I believe by definition, if you want to tell me a collector road, but by the code book, it appears that Brackett is definitely a collector road and the sixty-foot setback is not been met in either one of those parking lots. I spoke with Walter in my room, he actually said, "Oh, yeah." And that he hadn't had time to review the plans before they were given to you and that there was a problem.
Okay.
And I'm just bringing that up because if you look at the site plan, you will see the generic outline and they actually show, because it's seventy-five feet normally, except with the frontage table, it allows a minimum of sixty along Brackett Road. So the piece that goes along is not being met. Leonard's Drive is, because I do believe they meet the seventy-five going back in. So if you look at their line and then you overlay where the parking lots, in this case, both parking lots, some are more invasive into that frontage than others, but both parking lots have that problem. And so therefore, they are not to our code plan. So I had mentioned that the last time and I was, I believe the applicant stated, he didn't, he thought it was only collector and...
Arterial.
Arterial, but Brackett is a collector road, I believe by the definition.
Didn't we look at that?
My recollection was that I looked at, so I looked at the New York State U T website, which identifies collectors and arterials and Brackett Road didn't show up on the DOT site.
Correct, okay.
So I'll review that and look at it.
In our, our code book on page eleven, it defines street collectors as those streets which carry traffic from minor streets to major system of arterial and highways. Both two oh eight and seventeen K are highways and Brackett is in fact a collector because it is even getting more and more, so much so, we're gonna have to put a light on it. So I would believe that would by definition be termed a collector. And then when you go back into, and that's by our code, which I believe this hometown perhaps may have a little indifferent, I don't know, that's a question. But then when you get back actually into your table of your dimensions, it actually calls out Brackett specifically and it states that it is a minimum of sixty feet. Seventy-five otherwise is the normal frontage for businesses. So in fact, I would think, and that's my question, I believe it to be a collector by our definition in our code. I also believe that it's not meeting that sixty feet. Now, they can move it behind that sixty feet, it meets our criteria. But the fact that Brackett is specifically called out in our dimensional states to me that it's being considered perhaps as one of the main roads. There is a section that describes other road aspects in those setback requirements as it meets, but in this case, it, either one, in Walter.
Just to look clear, you're looking at the zoning code? And you're looking using dimensional requirements, sixty feet and seventy-five feet? Are you referring to the table of bulk requirements?
I am looking at the very back where it is in the table of dimension. When you go into the code, where it talks about the requirements of setback for residents and then it talks about for on non-residentials it refers. And then you go into the dimensional table, which is here. And it's right here, it is section seventy-twenty, business and industrial districts. It talks about I one and I two, which is what this is. It talks about what the front yard is and it talks about it being actually a seventy-five for the yard minimum for the front. But then it goes down and it does give the exception in the book where it talks about Brackett will have a parcels fronting Brackett Road, shall have a minimum front yard requirement of sixty feet. And that is a minimum.
Yeah, that's for buildings.
That's for...
That's for buildings.
Right.
These dimensional requirements are for structure.
Not necessarily parking.
Or roadways.
Well, when you go into the zone, in the way I read each, each one of these and kind of pirouetted through the book back and forth, it definitely finds, defines what a front yard is and that it must have a front yard. And then it talks specifically about businesses in that frontage area that no parking lot and nothing can be placed, no driveway can come in and you can go behind that frontage. And once you get behind that frontage, then you can put your parking lot. And that's very specific in the clause.
That's for the road. That's for the collector.
The whole issue is, is Brackett a collector?
Right.
To me, that's the issue.
Yeah.
We don't disagree with anything you're saying. Is Brackett a collector or is it not? If it is, you can't park in the front yard setback, whether it's sixty feet or seventy-five. If it's not, it's clearly not an arterial, to protest. The question is, is it a collector? And our code defines collector as taking from a minor road to a major road. Here, we have a somewhat of a unique situation connecting two major roads.
I don't know once upon a time, I mean, we'd have to see if there was anything in the comprehensive plan where sometimes a traffic section will actually identify what at that time was considered a collector, arterial. All I can say is, you know, the one resource I could look at at the time was New York State DOT has a functional classification viewer. The New York State DOT classifies every road in the entire state, whether it's a collector, an arterial, major, expressway, highway. And then anything it doesn't designate as that, it calls a local road. When I looked at that viewer, my recollection was it said that Brackett Road is a local road. So I think the question is, and it's something I can discuss with Rich, is what was the intent in terms of the definitions? Is there some other resource to look at in terms of how the roads have been classified in the town? Because the resource I relied on was New York State DOT.
I couldn't find any list of Brackett Road is this, or what is collector, what's arterial? It's not written. You have to kind of go through the process. So we'll get...
Thank you. And I did speak with Walter, and Walter was a bit concerned with it too, so I'm not going to outspeed.
Yeah, I talked to him the same day.
Okay, so we'll worry about it. So again, perhaps more reveal when we want to. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, who's Walter?
Walter.
Schmidt.
Owen's right there.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Anything else on Brackett twenty? Or any questions? No, I think there's... Yes, but I don't think it, and that's important. I think we're back. There may be a project or two on Brackett that does, that is out close to the road we have to look at. We did look at the one across the street, and it just touches the curb. Yeah? So, but we will look into that.
Did we ever discuss street signs?
Signs?
For these buildings?
Road signs.
Road signs? I believe we did.
There's a detail on there for both sites showing the sign.
What they're going to have is they're even, to keep them running right away. Anything else, anyone? I mean, we've got to, this, we've got to get to the bottom of this because it... That had to change, it would have to change.
I don't want to start an argument or anything, but we had raised this issue way back when we first started the layout and design. It was our understanding at that point that Brackett was not a front road. That's why it's designed the way it is. If we would have been told, we couldn't do that. And we would have pushed everything back to the back and accommodated that.
I understand.
That's why we have hearings to try to catch our little errors. That may not be errors. I'm just saying. I'm sorry.
And we've got some things to work out with the drainage yet, Andrew, correct?
Yes.
All right. Bring this in tonight also?
Well, I could just enough time to determine.
The frontage issue, or the front yard, I believe, two weeks. And we have a workshop that will talk about it.
It's true.
So we can hash it around a week from Wednesday. Seven fifty on the night. This will be the public's notice. We continue the hearing on ninth of February at seven fifty. Motion by John. Barge, I'm sorry. Motion by John, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And I'll get in touch with Karen. Next this evening is...
On the big screen, you graduate. Good evening from the record, Ross Wohlwitz, with engineering and surveying. Here on behalf of Lucas Zarelli, this is a continuation of the public hearing. The only comment we had was regarding to the location of the house on the remaining lands. We submitted plans for this meeting showing the house being relocated away from the neighboring property lines, centered it on the lot.
Is this it? Is that the one you want?
Yeah. The next one. So we've centered that on. It was a response letter we prepared to Andrew's comments. And their here to ask the board to close the hearing, issue a negative declaration. Grand preliminary, so if we can go to the health department. This is part of a subdivision that was previously approved by the health department. So the new lot needs to go to the health department.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public has any comments on Gisarelli? Okay, board, any comments or questions on this project? I think we're probably prepared to close the hearing on Gisarelli. A motion to close the hearing by Jay, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we'll get an F X started. We don't have one on the F X. We close the hearing. Sorry, I had to go around so long. See it? Yes. Next thing this evening is Russen. For the road con, for Meadows. Meadows upon the two lot clustered subdivision recommendations of road bond reduction. For section two, we propose road names, Haynes Lane and Maddy Scott Lane. Any discussion? Bond grand total is reduced now down to eighty-six, one eighty-three, fifteen. Does that make sense? The bond is seventy-four, nine forty-one, eighty-seven. Continuity equals eleven, two forty-one, twenty-eight. It's down to eighty-six, one eighty-three, fifteen. Anybody have any comments on it? Anything to be okay? Andrew, you can hit this, Craig.
Okay.
So motion to reduce the set of road bond reduction. By Rose, seconded by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If I may, I did a memo today, but it could be passed on to Mr. Finney. Because I know we keep wondering, what has he got to do to get his section two map signed? And what you just did is part of it, but there's more to it. Offered dedication for roads, drainage, bunch of things. So I put him in a short memo, and you can pass that on to Albert. So he hears people working on those over and over.
Next, this evening is, I believe, one of the Medline group people, Dr. Smith. Oh, thank you. Next this evening, Russen Factory, finishing. This is on Brackett Road. S U permits site plan, outline change. Asking for notice of intent to declare lead. Any discussion, board, on Russen, their lead agent?
Ryan and I, sorry.
Write it up.
Do you want us to just spread a minute on what we saw here?
Maybe while we open the hearing. Right, as you... Sure, sounds good. All right, a motion to declare lead. Certainly, by Ryan, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, are we doing a coordinated or uncoordinated review? Who else is out there? D E C article twenty-four. That's the only other one that we would have.
If Army Corps were involved, they would be entrusted.
Right, exactly. Oh, there is definitely a D E C wetland. D E C, and we have a... No, no, we won't have enough employees to require community water supply. And we're only going to have about twelve, uh, a hundred and twenty gallons to a hundred and forty-four gallons of septic. So it would be, it would be a local review on that. So that's, so the D E C article twenty-four. And the only reason I ask is that when we submit that plan, do we just submit an E A F to them and they'll do their own seeker? It just, I just need to know procedurally.
I've only found that some communities, D E C actually won't take action on permit unless the board has completed seeker here at the local level. So I don't know that you'll get far in terms of seeker.
We have. We have with, with my crowds, we haven't been able to process uncoordinated reviews. They just need the E A F. And know that this board is doing an uncoordinated review, if you choose that way.
I have on my folder that we discussed it before and decided on a list of...
There's just two other agencies.
I was just, really, just the D E C. We got the highway superintendent will issue a driveway permit. That'll sound like you guys through this.
You don't need any district extensions?
No, we are in the, we are in both water district. Water district two B.
Two B or two C.
Yeah, two bids, two B and sewer district two B.
Needs a waiver to not connect to the sewer system.
No, no waiver. We're just not within, we're not within that required distance to connect.
Okay. So probably, I missed it uncoordinated, right? Yeah, we don't have to coordinate. I don't think so.
Because we'll start our D E C application immediately, then send them, you know...
Send it.
Same at the same time, but we just need to know which, you know, which order to put it in.
So, so... Uncoordinated then, motion to declare lead. Ryan, seconded by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Yes. Yeah, they did a motion. Oh, Ryan Rose, okay. That's fine. Go Ryan Rose. Okay. One sixty Stone Castle Road, Natsos contracting. Did we get the form? Depending on financing. Standard note, if an extension is granted, applicant must comply with all applicable laws and regulations that may have been adopted since the original approval date or during any extension period. Any discussion on Natsos? It'd be a six-month extension. To August forty-eighth, twenty twenty. Motion to grant the extension. By Rich, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next to last, but not least, is approval of the April thirtieth plan fourteen minutes. Anybody have anything of substance?
I just had a question. I recited Mr. Kowbois was here for Hot Blossom. I'm thinking it was either Mr. Wimblewitz or Mr. Capella.
Capella.
I do recall Mr. Kowbois. So we will get that. But I wasn't on the board. Yeah, I gave a note, sorry to interrupt, that only Frank, Jay, Rose and Rich can vote.
Right.
You gentlemen were still in grade school.
Motion to adopt a minutes. By Rich, seconded by Jay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye, everybody. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thanks for coming out, everybody.